All right, I would invite Dr. Bishop to join me here. So, thank you, family for being here and everybody. And I'll just say, just to preface this, I, uh, this is a really good opportunity. We talked a little bit about the two o'clock, but for all the board members, including those getting sworn in today, thank you for your commitment to our schools. Thank you for doing what's not easy. Public service is not easy. And thank you for being a shining example of what it should be and for supporting our kids and our community. I've said before, I've never seen a thriving school district without a thriving board. And thank you. We're super excited that you're going to be here and for all of our board members that are currently here and those who got sworn in today. All right, um, per policy and state law, we have an oath to read and we'll do this together today. So, um, Dr. Bishop, if you would raise your right arm to the square and repeat after me. I, Dr. Brandon Bishop.
I, Dr. Brandon Bishop.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the laws thereof.
The laws thereof.
And the policies of the Douglas County School District Number Four.
And the policies of the Douglas County School District Number Four.
During my term, I will faithfully and impartially discharge the responsibilities of the office of school board member to the best of my ability.
During my term, I will faithfully and impartially discharge the responsibilities of the office of the school board, of school board member. Discharge the responsibilities of the office of school board member to the best of my ability.
By the authority vested in me as the clerk of Douglas County School District Number Four, I hereby declare you duly sworn, duly elected and eligible to serve as a member of the Roseburg Public Schools Board of Education. Congratulations. Okay, Ann. And Ann, thank you for serving again. All right, Ann, we've done this before. We'll do it again here for this term and we've got this if you, we can do this together. Thank you for raising your right arm to the square. Uh, I, Ann Crimmits.
I, Ann Crimmits.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And the policies of the Douglas County School District Number Four.
And the policies of the Douglas County School District Number Four.
During my term.
During my term.
I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the responsibilities.
Discharge the responsibility.
Of the office of school board member to the best of my ability.
Of the office of school board member to the best of my ability.
By the authority vested in me as the clerk of Douglas County School District Number Four, I hereby declare you duly sworn, duly elected and eligible to serve as a member of the Roseburg Public Schools Board of Education. Congratulations. Director Cubic. Thank you. All right. All right, if you want to raise your right arm to the square, repeat after me. I, Keith Cubic.
I, Keith Cubic.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And the policies of this, of Douglas County School District Number Four.
And the policies of Douglas County School District Number Four.
During my term.
During my term.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Well, I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the responsibilities.
Discharge the responsibilities.
Of the office of school board member to the best of my ability.
Of the office of school board member to the best of my ability.
Thank you. By the authority vested in me, as the clerk of Douglas County School District Number Four, I hereby declare you duly sworn, duly elected and eligible to serve as a member of the Roseburg Public Schools Board of Education. Congratulations. Thank you.
Welcome to the board again. Thank you so much. Um, so our next item of business is part of our annual organization of the board. So nominations are now open for board chair.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
It is my great honor and privilege to nominate our current board chair, Andrea Minor, as to continue, uh, her duty as board chair. She has been an absolute pleasure to work with this year. She is, um, I've worked with her behind the scenes on our pre-meetings and post-meetings. And, um, she has been one of my favorite board members. Thirty-two years. She is top-notch. She's prepared. She visits schools. Um, you could not ask for a better chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, are there any further nominations? Okay, that being said, um, all in favor of Andrea Minor being board chair? Okay, thank you. It's unanimous. I, um, thank you, Director. That was very meaningful.
You're welcome.
And it is an honor to serve in this capacity. Thank you. Um, and now, um, each, uh, nominations are now open for vice chair. Do I have a nomination?
I would like to nominate Rod Cotton to serve again as vice chair. He's worked so well, uh, with the current chair and, um, I think he will add a few more years to your thirty-two years of service. We, we just appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a second? We've got a second. Um, are there any other nominations for vice chair? Okay, that being said, all in favor of Rod Cotton being vice chair? Say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. And it, I will echo, um, Ann's sentiments that Rod has been a pleasure to work with and I've learned a lot from him. And I'm, I'm glad that he wants to stay on. So, um, next item of business, we have a review of agenda and communications to the board from Superintendent Corden.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, um, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. I thank the board for, uh, spending most of the day here in meetings. Uh, in terms of the re, review of the agenda, um, we're going to remove items number three and four off the current agenda following our work session previous to this meeting. Um, and relative to communication, I just want to let the board know that Assistant Superintendent Nee is, uh, with family in Detroit and, um, helping and spending time vacationing and also helping with, uh, family tonight, wishing her well. She wanted to be online tonight. See that she's not quite online, but she, they were dealing with some flooding back in Detroit and she's, um, helping with that tonight. So, so, uh, I can present if you want to the item on Chromebooks tonight.
This is going to be a quick meeting. So we have our consent agenda and, um, the items that were, that are included in that, which you've already had a chance to look at. But I just want the public to know what items are included in that consent agenda. That is approval of previous agenda, board meeting minutes, license recommendation for employment, license resignations for retirements, gifts to the district, a list of surplus items. So I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Great. Wonderful. Um, so the unanimous, the consent agenda has been approved. Um, now we are entering into something that we need to do every year. This is the resolutions on how we conduct business. Um, our first one is twenty-five, twenty-six oh-one. This is a designation of clerk and deputy clerk. I would entertain a motion to approve that. This is on pages thirty-three through forty in your packet.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. So all in favor of twenty-five, twenty-six oh-one designation of clerk and deputy clerk, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes.
Chair, I don't believe that we voted on the previous. There was just a proposal in a second, but we didn't vote on the consent agenda.
Ah, thank you very much. So we will go back to that consent agenda. Um, so all in favor of approving the consent agenda? Aye. Great. Unanimous. Okay.
I got it.
Thank you, Director Bishop. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've accepted the designation of clerk and deputy clerk. Moving on to resolution, resolution twenty-five, twenty-six oh-two, this is the designation of custodian of funds and use of facsimile signature. So I would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
Great, we have a second. Okay, it's on the table. Um, any discussion? No discussion. Um, so we have a vote of twenty-five, twenty-six oh-two designation of custodian of funds and use of facsimile signature. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. For legal reasons, I'm going to state for the record, this action officially replaces Cheryl Northam, who has retired, with Danielle Littlefield, who is now Director of Finance and Operations effective July one, twenty-twenty-five. Congratulations. And now we have twenty-five, twenty-six oh-three designation of auditor. Great. Any discussion, conversation? Okay, great. All in favor of approving twenty-five, twenty-six oh-three designation of auditor? Say aye. Great. No opposed. That passes unanimously. Twenty-five, twenty-six oh-four designation of depositories. I would entertain a motion for approval.
Second.
You have a first and a second. Any discussion on designation of depositories? Okay, great. All in favor of, of approval of twenty-five, twenty-six oh-four? Aye. Great. Passes unanimously. Twenty-five, twenty-six oh-five designation of attorney. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Great, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great. Um, we have a first and a second for designation of attorney. Do we have discussion?
I would, I turn to my comments. I'm making a recommendation, um, to the board and, and to the superintendent of, that we do an RFP. Go ahead and, and vote the current attorney. So we, we keep an attorney on staff or on call. And that we, um, do ask superintendent to do an RFP on, uh, going out for attorney services. I think it's, it's been a long time that we've had the same attorneys. And I think this is one of those things where it's good to, to see what's out there personally.
Had some discussion. Are there any other comments or thoughts? Okay, that being said, let's finish this up. Um, so it's on the table, twenty-five, twenty-six oh-five designation of attorney. All in favor? Aye, Director Cubic?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Um, but I do ask that Superintendent Jared Corden, would you please pursue an RFP for designation of?
Yes, consider it done. Thank you. We'll work on that. Uh, RFP process is, we'll develop it. Um, there's a, about a month period. It needs to sit twenty-eight days in our current policy. So we'll get that going and, and keep in, keep the board abreast of the process. And I might recommend that, uh, potentially if this, we tend to have a board member or two join the scoring as well. And so maybe Madam Chair, think about which, probably the finance committee potentially, or it could be AMP as well, whichever, but probably I would invite board to participate in the scoring of the RFPs as they come in.
Yeah, thank you. Please just let us know when that, when that comes up. Um, now we have twenty-five, twenty-six oh-six designation of election official. Do I have a motion to accept this resolution? Okay, we have a first. Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. All those, or any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of accepting twenty-five, twenty-six oh-six designation of election official, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Passes. Twenty-five, twenty-six oh-seven designation of budget officer and newspaper.
Oh, I understand. Second.
Okay, so twenty-five, twenty-six oh-seven designation of budget officer and newspaper. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second? We have a second. Great. Now we have some discussion. Dr. Cubic, or Mr. Cubic, I did it again. I'm sorry, I ended up doctor. It's all over the place.
I'm just verifying statutory requirement for newspaper to circulation. With the news review going to electronic and one edition a week. Is that still qualified? Is that the right paper?
So it does meet the requirements. We did look into this this week. In fact, it does meet the requirements of this, uh, um, this motion, this resolution. Whether the board wants to consider another alternative is up to the board, but this, uh, this resolution can be followed through and completed with the, with even the once a month, or once a week, excuse me, paper copy of the interview. Currently, there is print in the statute. We believe this needs to probably change sooner than later as the world changes toward more digital media. But there are many districts on the east side of the state, for example, that don't have newspapers. We did check, um, actually Chelsea had made a call up to SBA and we checked in with a couple of people. It does, does count. Um, I do think it's good. I always love a local newspaper because we have postings for meetings. There's, uh, certain statutory requirements we have for public notice. And, uh, we need to be thoughtful about timelines. Um, that's the one thing we need to think about is being thoughtful about timelines. So it does count. The board could always look at other options, but that's complicated because distribution. I mean, if you did, you know, register guard Oregonia, I'm not sure how many people get those for public notices. So, um, it does, it does quali, it does satisfy the resolution requirements.
Is there any more discussion? Okay, we have a first and second. Twenty-five, twenty-six oh-seven designation of budget officer and newspaper. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. And then our last one, twenty-five, twenty-six oh-eight authorization to apply for grants.
I have a motion to approve resolution twenty-five, twenty-six oh-eight authorization to apply for grants.
Great. Do we have a second? Awesome. Do we have any discussion? Okay, twenty-five, twenty-six oh-eight authorization, authorization to apply for grants. All in favor? Great, it's unanimous. It, it goes. Um, item number five, since we're skipping three and four. Consideration, um, adoption of the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six Board Superintendent Operating Agreement. So this is something that we do every year. It's the same as it was, um, before and, uh, it, it out, this document outlines expectations from the superintendent and the Board of Education. So I would entertain a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six Superintendent Operating Agreement as proposed.
So moved.
I'd move to approve the, uh, whatever, uh, adoption of Superintendent Operating Agreement, Board Superintendent Operating Agreement.
And Director Crimmits, would you like to second?
I would second that.
Great. Is there any, um, discussion on this?
Do we have it designed today?
Um, it is available for signing tonight. If this, if we vote this in, we will need your signature before you leave. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of approving the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six Board Superintendent Operating Agreement as proposed? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Motion carries. Okay, we have now item number six, our proposed student fees for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six. That's on page forty-six of your packet. And, um, unless you have any questions for, um, Danielle, I would entertain a motion to approve these student fees as proposed. Okay, well, do I have a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six student fees as proposed? Great. Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. Do we have a discussion? Any, any questions for Danielle? It's pretty straightforward. We've made, she, she was graciously just things that were increased. She put them in red. It's very minimal. So, okay, um, so we're voting, um, all in favor of approving the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six student fee, fees as proposed. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, great. Um, motion carries. Um, item number seven, the approved, the purchase of gravel for the RHS parking lot. Now that's on page forty-seven, but we also have a proposal here at your, at your seat. Um, I would like, um, if Director, uh, Finance and Operations, Danielle Littlefield, um, if you would talk about that a little bit.
Sure. So we, um, purchased a house on that property last year and we were able to get that removed. Um, we have been working to clear that property and we're at the phase to where we, uh, need approval for board policy. Um, to continue with the work and get the gravel in there with the idea of increasing our parking space for the students to keep them on campus versus having to park off campus.
This is the building you're going to fire exercise.
It is.
What's the timeline for this being done?
We're hoping to have it done by the end of August before school starts. We're, we're pushing it.
How many parking spaces?
We're, we're looking at ninety-four to a hundred and six, but we don't have that plotted out yet, so it could increase depending on how it's laid out.
Um, I, I just, um, have a question as to, um, what can we do as a board to speed this process along as we've hit a few bumps in the road?
We have, and Mr. Graff is here with us tonight. He has been working very hard. So we're in the permitting phase. We have all of that going. Um, we have next week, I believe they'll be submitting for that. Is that correct, Tracy? Yeah.
So do we have a temp, do we have a temporary, uh, temporary permit yet? We do not.
Satisfied the city requirements and they feel like they have a good understanding of what, uh, city planning will require of us to approve that temporary.
Can you explain why a conditional permit wasn't, um, authorized for this?
Could you speak into the mic though, Tracy? Thank you. Would you repeat the question and then answer it? Or you can repeat the question.
Yeah, so I make, I think it's worth just, this is a, it's a priority for, I know Dave's behind you at the high school. This is more than a parking lot. This is really an issue of student safety.
Yes.
Because we have students that are walking, we'll have students that are parking well off campus. They're coming back from activities and athletics. They walk down Harvard, you know, and sometimes at night, it's not a safe place to be. Uh, there's, you know, kids are parking spaces that aren't lit at night and it's just, this is a pretty significant safety issue for us. So maybe you can get, give the board a, just where we're at in the process right now.
So initially I applied for a conditional use permit. Uh, and, and at the conditional use permit pre-meeting, it was recommended that we step away from that and go with a temporary use permit, given the nature of the project we were proposing. A gravel parking lot is not, uh, not something that the city necessarily supports. Uh, in order to do that over a, an asphalt parking lot would require, I believe they said five different variances in the parking lot codes and requirements. They also had concern with this being a temporary parking lot uh, because of the larger vision of that becoming possibly athletic complex at some point. They want, they really would like to see more of, all right, if this is temporary, what's coming behind it and what kind of timeline do we think we would have? So they're wanting to see a little bit bigger picture for down there. Um, and ultimately they want to prove it for, it's temporary for parking lot, but it eventually will become, say, an athletic field. So they, they just had reservations on, on doing the conditional use permit.
So Tracy, hate to butt in, but i- is that a condition that provided to authorize the permit?
No, it was laid out as a, would like to see that larger plan. Um, not as a, we must do that in order to receive a conditional use permit. Um, so their recommendation was this temporary permit, uh, to help them, help us is the way, way it felt. Uh, they felt like they could, could authorize this for one year, which is all the temporary use permit is good for. Um, we can reapply, uh, two more times so we can get three years out of it. Take, I think to allow us more time to develop what's, what really our vision is and have some discussions with them and give us a little more time to produce documents that, that they're more comfortable with. I, I think they're afraid of, if they tell the school district, yes, you know, no big deal. I mean, we understand your, your, your issue. We'd like you to do this because we know it's good for kids, but it could potentially set a precedence for the guy on the other side of the river that now wants to do a, a conditional use permit for a gravel parking lot. So, so I think it just gave, they want to give themselves and us more opportunity to lay out a clearer path and a clearer understanding and, and have better plans to stand on.
I guess my last question, are they, whatever they need for clarity, do they understand the timeline on this for us?
I, I don't know that they fully grasp it, but you know, I did, when I had that com, conference with them, they said, you know, there's, we still have a property to purchase, you know, there's several millions of dollars. There's, you know, a final plan to be developed. This is a, you know, a big process.
Yep.
And an expensive process and not, not one, you know, we're not going to start breaking ground on fields in three years. I'm saying, it's really the same deal. I mean, I could call it a dirt parking lot right now, but as soon as it, it rains, we're going to have wet bugs. So, um, I was actually somewhat surprised to, to learn, maybe I should have already known this, but a compacted gravel parking lot is considered impervious, the same as asphalt, which was surprising to me. Makes me know. So. Um, a, as a temporary lot, we, we don't have plans to put in any, any utilities there, um, other than what the city might require. There is some requirement of a little bit of storm drain, like a catch basin for any runoff that might be produced on that lot. I, I do have the ability with the neighboring property to potentially set up a couple of floodlights that we could send that direction and not necessarily impact our, our, the people that are renting our homes next door. Um, but there, but there's not plans to actually place lighting within the lot. It's more of a.
Primary use will be daylight hours when school's in session, although it could be potentially used for, you know, athletic events as well. Be used, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we can't call ADA space because of the gravel. It can definitely be used as a spot even to now turn around and people need to get to the gate or whatever. So it's, it's important for, important community event.
Given the nature of it, they are not at this time requiring any ADA, additional ADA spots, uh, on the property, on that property or district property. I did have a contingency plan to, to add a couple if, if it was going to be necessary.
I have a couple of questions. Uh, first one for Dave, is this going to, these hundred spots going to help? How many, how many more? How many kids, um, we do the hundred? Is that going to take care of all the kids that drive or?
It, it'll take care of at least all of the seniors and all of the juniors. I mean, if every senior, every junior. I mean, if every senior, every junior drove, obviously it wouldn't, but the amount that the, that we have each year who are applying for permits that we have to go on a waitlist for. It would cover all the waitlist.
Now. I watched city council meeting Monday night. You, you would pepperoni pizza, you would think that maybe Laura would zone a neighborhood in the, in the city of Roseburg, but they're not. I, I would suggest they come out and live by, out to my house where I live, at the college, talk about speed and stuff and parking and stuff. You would think they'd be jumping over, they would be happy to have that in there. And I know how we could get this move, get moving faster, and I'm going to get in trouble, but I don't care. You get a hundred students to go to their next city council meeting. Whenever that is, next week or the following week, if they don't move on this, this is just.
Safety issue.
It's, it's a safety issue. And it's temporary and, and we're trying to do something good for our kids and they just. They need to take care of their own backyard.
I, I feel with IES and landmarks help. I had a conversation with city planning earlier this week, so they feel like they have a really strong grasp on. What is required within the application to satisfy their needs. As far as reaching out to neighbors with a temporary use permit, they're only required to reach out one hundred feet. And the only property that we don't own is a hundred and thirty-nine feet away from us, so. So, we should be the only one that receive an opportunity for comment.
Do you think that if it was someone that's there that's.
The, my initial application for the conditional use permit, the narrative of the project spoke mainly to. The safety that this would help provide our students and athletics, not evening events, you know, you know. You go to a football game and, and bellows is almost impassable.
Yep.
Because of the people parking along.
Exactly.
You know, I believe this parking lot will let.
Yep.
Let us feel good about actually placing some no parking signs there.
Exactly.
More accessible for first responders and, and anybody needing to get away, so. That was all we received, yes, I, I attempted to get four, only two responded. Yeah, Knife River is highly qualified to, to be successful in doing this parking lot.
I just had a question on, it's gravel. How are the spaces marked? How do you do that?
So, our, our initial plan, we, we as a district own striping equipment. So, we will, we will stripe it with graphic paint to start. And then I'm going to be trying to get surplus or. Throw away fire hose from fire departments, DFPA, whoever I can get to let me have their throwaway stuff. And we'll cut those in length and pin them and then paint those, you know, hold up much, much better. Our, our enemy will be people hot rodding their cars out there and cutting cookies. That'll, that'll be what we'll kind of be up against, so we'll.
Yeah.
No, I, I do plan to put some bollards and some chains across the entrance so that we can control. Non-school, our non-school use access, so we don't get the, you know, Saturday night. Move a van in there or, or, you know, you have to, a hundred things. I did, I, I also have my quotes for placing a fence across the back of that property. That way our students can't have easy access to the river.
Thank you for your diligence.
For the record, you would have never done a cookie as a high school kid in that parking lot.
Not in that one particularly.
Yeah. And I have one more thing with Vams, apologize.
No.
There are some plans, but they're a little different now. I don't know where they're at there, but.
And Danielle's.
And, but it's going to be, you, we can't speak for future boards.
Correct.
You know, coming down the line, ten years from now. Our, our economy might be going so well and we need a mill there, I don't know, but we can't speak for future boards.
Right, and I just think that's part of the conversation moving forward with this. You know, we do have the drawings that were made up in, I think, two thousand and five. You know, we could start with those, if, if we need to look at that a little differently, then maybe we can do that.
Yeah, I did have one more question, so we have two quotes in front of us. And I am assuming that we're actually voting on to accept Knife River's materials at fifty-two thousand. And five hundred and five dollars, is that correct?
Yep, okay. The other quote you see was the only other proposal that we got.
Okay, and it is higher?
Yes.
Okay. You don't even, you didn't make a motion, I, I didn't even say what the motion was. Okay, so. We have a first and a second, all in favor of, of, let me see here. A purchase of gravel from Knife River, accepting their bid at fifty-two thousand five hundred and five dollars. Any discussion, okay, or whatever, I'm confused now, discussion, great, no discussion, all in favor? Aye, down with the hecklers, it was unanimous, thank you very much.
No, I didn't vote, I, I hadn't voted yet, I have one quick question. I forgot and I apologize. Says approved purchase of gravel, is that, are they going to spread the gravel or is this just the gravel?
Yes, it includes the grading and gravel.
Okay. Yeah, I'm in the. Okay, thank you. We have the request for approval of a Chromebook purchase. And you have the memo on that for five hundred C T L Chromebooks for students' use at a cost of one hundred and sixty-four thousand five hundred. Funding will be provided through the Technology Replacement Fund. And we have that quote is on page forty-nine of your packet. So, I would entertain a motion to approve the purchase of five hundred Chromebooks from C T L as proposed at a price of one hundred and sixty-five, five.
Oh, motion to approve the Chromebook.
Was it a hundred and sixty-five or a hundred and sixty-four, five?
Okay, well, on my note, I'm looking at it someplace else. There, one sixty-four, five, thank you, thank you for that correction, I have it wrong in my notes.
I'll second that.
Great, we have a first and a second, any discussion? Okay.
I'm assuming this is an annual. Where we're, we're buying the things about this time of year, every year. What, what's the, you know, I brought up earlier this year, the, the, what that's a lot of problem situation. What, what does it look like every year, like, has it been five hundred consistently every year? We're just more than we did last?
No, it's, so we, we're actually making a bit of an adjustment, we've actually. High school's been pretty darn good with this, where we've had issues actually on replacements in the middle schools. And we've had, we've replaced a number of these, the middle schools. So much that I'm like, we're actually going to change the way we're doing the Chromebooks at the middle school next year. They're not going home, we're doing carts. We've had a couple situations where we replaced five, six, seven for one student. And they're a bit of anomalies, but it's really, really added up. And kids can check them out, the middle schools this year, it's going to be a new process, they're not going home with kids. They're going to be, we'll do the carts like we used to in the past, have the carts there, they can charge at night. It changes a little bit instructionally where we don't have kids on canvas necessary at night, which is our learning management system. So, we're working on that, and Dr. Weber's been great about kind of shepherding some of that work, but. We anticipate not needing hopefully this many. We do have fifty, how many Chromebooks do we have, six thousand Chromebooks right now? So, they're on a, I mean, they are a consumable. We have a two-year, this is a two-year warranty with these, I believe, in the C T L quote, I believe. And so, they just, they come up, or you just, you're on a, this is pretty standard for replacement. But I will say, I've been a little. Concerned, frustrated at times about the amount of replacements we've had. And we anticipate getting back to a more standard rate of replacement. Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the purchase of five hundred Chromebooks from C T L as proposed at a price of, oh shoot.
Yeah, one sixty-four, five.
One sixty-four, five? Great, motion carries. Uh, now we're on to the superintendence report.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate the long meeting tonight, this meeting's been short, but we spent three hours before this getting some work done, so thank you, board members, and I've got a relatively short. Report for you tonight. I did want to give you an update on summer learning, summer learning has been fantastic and we're really, really thankful for the funds we received. For summer learning. If you're, if you don't remember, the way the state had kind of organized this last year and this year. Was kind of a need basis, but it's really more around how your kids were doing in the area of literacy was the main. Issue, and so for our district that's seen uptick in literacy achievement, we didn't qualify initially for any of these funds. And so, we were able to work to get these funds and a huge kudos to lots of folks, our staff and others. Dr. Weber's been instrumental in also shepherding this as well, but it took the business office and T N L and our nutrition staff and our teaching staff and. We've got an army of people working with kids, we have six hundred and sixty-five students participating, which has been fantastic. It's great, it's been really, really wonderful and. I can give you just some anecdotal data, Dave was doing a great job sharing. Mr. Vickery, our ninth grade on track numbers and we've got a number of kids that aren't where we need them to be. And the majority of the students that are under six credits, and Dave's done a great job with that too, have been targeted, like, we need to get you there. And Dave, you've got most of those kids there, you know, and about two-thirds of the kids, and these are kids oftentimes that are kind of a little more on the edge. And there are some, oftentimes it's complicated for kids to get there and commit to be there, and so, great job at the high school. We've got the right kids with us doing the right work, and so, we're grateful for all our staff helping out with that. Just in terms of some bright spots in the school district, as we think about the state of the schools and as we plan for this upcoming year, which I'm super excited about. Our end of the year assessment data shows improvements across the board. That's a trend that is not typical right now in Oregon schools, and I think the board and our staff is to be commended for their work. We have really stayed the course and it's, it's not easy and as we've seen across our county and across the state, a decline. And a lot of reasons why kids are struggling, which we don't, we don't discount. We continue to say, if we can do these things with kids, our kids are amazing and they're going to do well. And we're seeing evidence of that across every curricular area right now, so that's super exciting. We're excited about the new curriculum, the, the adoptions that are coming up, particularly elementary E L A adoption is one of the exciting ones. We've got an adoption in middle school for health and we're excited about that. We also have so many professional learning opportunities this summer, over two dozen opportunities this summer. And that's, let me say it again, it's this summer for learning. So, for our staff to come be learners in the summer, we don't demand what we don't support. And so, we know we have to continue to get better as staff and learn and grow and think about, you know, new ways, better ways, how kids are learning. And so, big kudos to T N L for providing that, for our staff for leaning into that, and for the board for approving the budget that allows us to do that. I wanted to let the board know, we've got an exciting opportunity, partnership opportunity, partnership's something we love to do in the community. We've got some great partners that we work with in a variety of ways. We are in partnership with Amqua Health, Thrive Amqua and E S D and South, South Amqua School District. To host a building tomorrow together event. And we, there will be two of these events in the county, one at Roseburg High School on Saturday, August sixteenth. And one the following week at South Amqua, I don't remember the date. It's Thursday after that. This event is a celebration of kids getting back to school. It doesn't matter what school district you live in, it doesn't matter what, if you go to public school, private school, it doesn't matter. We want to celebrate kids coming back to school. We have several partners in the community that'll be joining us. There'll be free physicals there, people want to do memorizations, have. Will be food and activities for families, it'll be, it's open to everybody, whether you have an infant, a toddler, a middle school, a high school kid, elementary student. So, we're excited to be part of this community effort to celebrate getting back to school this year. I mentioned this to the last meeting, but we are set for an all-staff kickoff and would love to see the board join us there with the staff. And celebrate, we've got great, amazing people that work for us, that are incredible staff members. We can celebrate our kids and our community in our direction for the year, so that is going to be on August twenty-fifth at Roseburg High School. From eight, or seven forty-five to eight forty-five A M. A couple more things, I wanted to talk a little bit about on budget and the importance of maintaining fiscal responsibility. We take this really seriously, we look at our finances and operations every single week. Danielle and I meet and review a host of different things. Our cabinet team looks at not just how we're spending, but the efficacy of our spending. And I wanted to let folks know on the board, a few things here, as you know, we have a balanced budget, so thank you. As we've worked through the process of that, we did make some adjustments. As a reminder, we made about two and a half million dollars in reductions last year, most of those came through attrition, other adjustments in staffing. We did allocate two million dollars for the U C C project that we're working toward right now with U C C, that's currently in the budget. And as a reminder, we also paused. Or eliminated probably for this year, the transfers to our transfer funds. So, this is everything from major maintenance in the four oh four fund, vehicle replacement and field replacement. We did this as a bit of a hedge because we really felt like with the staff we have and the opportunity we had, we had to pause that for this year. The pausing transfers is really a one-year. Process, you're really, you're, you're devaluing a future account, and what gets tricky about that is like in inflationary times, that's like a double ding. So, that's what we did for adjustments, we got to be thinking about that in terms of the twenty-six, twenty-seven year, we're planning for that, how to think about those adjustments. I did want the board to know that we have also not received, you've probably heard in the media. Reports about a pause in some federal funding, entitled funding. There's about seven billion dollars that has been allocated but not distributed. That equates about four hundred thousand dollars in funding for us, in title two A and four, for the two buckets. And so, we, we don't know what's going on, it's been paused, we're not sure if we'll see that funding or not. That's a four hundred thousand dollar, we've actually allocated the funding this year, so the funding. I mean, they're in positions that are spent, so we have budgeted for this. In my career, I haven't seen funding come in this late ever before. We did receive in title four, we did receive an estimate. Two A, we never received an estimate, so we do have some things we need to kind of think through in terms of how we're going to cover, it's not. Right now, it's going to need to be covered through our ending fund balance right now at this point, so we have some, we'll wait and see what happens there. Also wanted to let folks know, as you, as you likely remember, we were one of. Seven school districts across the state, there were ten buildings across the state that qualified for the New Americas grant. And so, thank you for our ops team and, and department for putting in for this grant. We have a two and a half million dollar allocation, that was for air qualities, H VAC at Jolene and Eastwood. And that is also on hold as part of some of the federal holds right now, we have moved forward with some. Their engineering estimates, I guess, Danielle, correct me if that's wrong, it's.
Yeah, they came out and did like an assessment and that part of this was approved. But we cannot move further until we hear, and they don't have the information for us, whether we can move or not.
So, again, great news on the balanced budget, we made some adjustments, but we do have about three million dollars of, of funding we are anticipating that has not arrived. And we're not sure the status of that. We, I just want to jump to the, the last two columns within this, this is just more of a reminder for the, the board is well aware of this, but. Because we do put these meetings out for the public and transparency to let people know, you know, we're spending. Roughly one and a half to two million dollars per year in just maintaining our buildings that are old. And if we think about, you know, some of the, you know, we think about like our, our pause in the transfer fund, that's about that amount. Um, are we do have, I do have, I have grave concerns about the amount of money that's intended to be in a classroom supporting children. That is not money that's necessarily well-spent. This, our maintenance department, operations folks do an incredible job with our facilities. But we have buildings that were built before World War Two and in some cases before World War One. That are well past their their effective use. And we do need to think about the fiscal responsibility, I, there's times in this four oh four fund where I just. We are doing what we can to patch things together, but our ongoing maintenance costs for really the deterioration of buildings that are packed their effective life is costing us about a million and a half to two million dollars a year. Uh, I mentioned the the bright spot, we did receive the eight hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars from O D E and that's, that's fantastic, we want to thank our partners at O D E for supporting our children there. Um, last thing I want to let people know about, and this is also a little bit about fiscal responsibility, so as you're well aware, um, we have a great history in our seismic rehab grants. Um, we, um, seismic rehabilitation is a really critical uh fund for us. Um, how that process works is the state allocates funds that districts apply for. And um, we put in, so we currently have a seismic project that's in the Vo-Tech building at the vocational ed building on the east side of the Vo-Tech building. Um, that's currently underway, that's going pretty well, we're on time, we're on budget, it's great, S and B James is our construction management folks doing the job there and doing the work there, it's been great. And thank you Tracy and others who have been shepherding that. I did want the board to know, we did submit an application for Sunny Slope Elementary that we did not receive an award on. We did a little bit of digging on this and um, we were, they did send us a list of the last decade. Of how many seismic awards were awarded by school district, we were ten out of the last ten in ten years. Um, no one received more than that. And that didn't sate me necessarily, but there were many that were two in the last ten or four in the last ten. There were only a few school districts across the state that received ten out of ten. Um, I think there were three total, I believe, uh, we were one of them, so we um did not. We did not receive the green light and award for the Sunny Slope. Um, that being said, um, we will apply um again for Sunny Slope, but it won't be next year. Next year's application will need to be the west end of the Vo-Tech building. We need to complete that project, it's a really critical project to complete from a student safety and seismic. Uh, space, we really have kind of four massive concrete walls there and the seismic work is gonna be super important there. Um, that will require a two and a half million dollar seismic grant, that is the award now for immediate occupancy, but it will require us, and we've been saving for this. About another million and a half dollars on our side to complete the west end, that's in addition to the two and a half million on the east end. So just an app why about Sunny Slope, it's disappointing news, we will get them back on the um. The list again, but that's gonna have to, it'll follow the the project for the Vo-Tech West. I also just want to mention a few things, um, you know, we've, uh, when we think about seismic work. Two things here for the community to know, this, when when our district receives an award, this is a community, should be a community celebration. In the event of a catastrophic cascade event. This is going to, these places we've retrofitted will be where the Red Cross shows up. These are community, these will become community resources in the event of a seismic event, so. We should be grateful that in many places across our district, we have a place. Now that being said, when we think about a seismic rehab, it's a, it's a portion of a building. It does not seismically secure a building, it seismically secures a place in a building. So Tracy, if we took, uh, let's pick Jolaine for a minute, how many seismic projects would it take to seismically? To seismically retrofit, say, Jolaine? Two to three more, so cafeteria done.
And then depending on what was needed. How much, how much.
Yeah.
But next.
Yeah. So you might need four on a larger building, eight seismic, now, we all know this, but new buildings have seismic standards. And so a new building built would be seismically retrofitted as part of the building, and so. Uh, we've been excited, we were grateful for the last ten years, we've gotten approval every single year, but we also um need to realize that although this is a win. It's a very slow process because the two and a half million dollars only gets you a space in a building.
You know, in case there was a seismic event and I had to relocate people to a new state building. Like, is there some kind of placard or some like communication in public of this is the size of this sound building? Is do they require that?
We do not have anything on the exterior, but every one of these projects requires a placard on the inside of the building that indicates that. This building was seismically retrofitted with grant funds from the state of Oregon as well as contribution from the.
And permitting process, so the county and city, depending on its designation, would know a seismic, where those seismically reinforced buildings would be. Um, we have, uh, uh, last thing I'll just mention is um that we have. Uh, invested, it's good for our community to know, about twenty-three and a half million dollars, twenty-five and a half million dollars in our buildings since two, since the nineteen twenty school year, so we've made. A pretty significant investment capitally in our building and that's come, um, you know, without, without a, uh, without a bond, but it's been great that we've been able to do some of this work with our. With our buildings, um, but we'll need to think long-term about the this, the status of our buildings. That's all I got you for tonight, so thank you.
Thank you, you always have great information for us. We're moving on to uh Board of Education reports, I'll start with Director Kremets, do you have anything that you would like to speak on?
Just excited about the summer learning and and uh especially the high school kids. You know, moving ahead and getting some of those credits, very important to me and so glad for that work going on.
Pictures are different, are the, the video seems different, screens, are they different?
There was an update, it's almost clear now.
It's clear and it looks like the whole. I don't know.
My head's.
Very absurd.
Yeah, and Dr. Bishop's too.
I have nothing for the benefit of the children.
I have nothing to add.
Uh, I just want to welcome Dr. Bishop. Uh, great to have you on board. And I also just want to kind of state. This medical building at U C C, it's like the most proud moment. Serving on the sport that I've had. And I just want to give you credit because you came in, recognized the opportunity, communicated to us properly. I'm I'm really, really, I have, you're talking, you're talking about hope earlier. Now, I'm seventy-five percent full of hope that that note of passion, so.
I have several things, if I'm being very brief, I've been working with Roseburg High School Foundation uh on property that we uh receive for fundraiser. Uh, participating meetings, fundraiser for, there's a golf tournament and uh. And other issues related to programs that are made available for faculty and and children. The second one is Fullerton Four has a new track. I watched it construct, I went over and eyeballed it, I walked on it last night. Um, long-term waiting project, really neat. Um, third thing was, uh, earlier this week, I drove over to Roseburg High, looked at the property clearing, walked down to the river. I got my shoes all dusty, it does need gravel. And um, it's gonna be a great opportunity. As I was leaving, I saw a door open, stuck my head in and had a nice chat with the music teacher who was in doing work for our children. On a mid-weekday this last week. And then uh finally, I did a little consultation with Superintendent on the city development issue that I gave him a report on.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, with business before the board concluded and with no objections, this meeting is adjourned.